Laugh so hard it just cracked.
Are you all moved in?
I'm not, I don't teach anymore.
He's only four months old.
Oh, no. Moved into my house.
Wow, that's nice.
Alright. It's gonna be crazy in like a week.
Where are you going next?
It's already.
So you wanna drive back to Phillips?
It's nice to be like, alright, I have the kids. Do about three or four days, that'd be like a mental.
Alright, um, it is six o'clock. So we, uh, like to start on time around here for these things, so it being six o'clock, we'll open up the study session of, uh, third, twenty nineteen, and, uh, Lori Moss, Lori Lucas, excuse me, Ms. Lucas, will take the role.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Look, I'm sorry, I'm sitting.
Wrong me. I know, it's exciting, the wood, the varnish, the smell, everything.
Scott.
We're just doing our, and there's a lot of guests here today for doing presentations, so I understand the confusion. Well, we just opened it up, and we start off, um, with the role having been taken, and everybody's in their places. Uh, by the way, I know, everybody knows this is our first time here, we are gonna have, um, the, it's very important for people to understand that this is our microphone system up here with the four green lights. It's kinda directional, everything in this room, everything in this room is recorded and amplified and recorded. So, uh, any aside conversations are not really asides, um, you just keep in mind that it's a different kind of recording system, and, uh, it's important for us to understand that. The, uh, the recording's gonna be done, and the, uh, live streaming will be ready for the next city council meeting. Uh, we have this camera that's gonna be on everybody at all times as well. So it'll be a four-frame, uh, camera system, and so there'll be like one large one, but, uh, it'll be, everybody will be able to see those all-important reactions uh, from other council members when other people are talking, you know, so, yeah. Hmm, learn how to do that a little bit. And, uh, then, at our next meeting, I believe, right, Katie?
Yes.
Uh, Katie Wilcox, who crafted these, uh, these tables for us, will be coming in to give you the description of where the wood came from and all that cool stuff. I gotta just say, kudos to, uh, Grant and Jason and Aaron, uh, who did all the work to get us ready for tonight. They put in a lot of work on this to make sure the electronics worked, and, uh, of course, to Michael and, and the rest of the team for working with Katie to get this done in timely fashion, so, pretty cool. That said, uh, we do have, uh, some presentations tonight that, uh, to the council, the first one's on the South Sound nine-one-one. I don't see Officer Moody here, 'cause he's on a call.
He's not here yet.
Um, should we just adjust the agenda then?
That's okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so we'll move right on to JCI contract among patients. And in the future, we will have another podium over here, and that's where all the presentations will be made from. For tonight, Chad's just gonna use his inside-outside voice.
Did you see we are being recorded or not today?
We are audibly being recorded.
Audibly but not video.
Double check, are we on video?
Should be on video.
It will be.
Just not streaming.
Just not live.
Not streaming, but, yeah, video recording.
Thank you.
Should we wait?
Um, just give me a second.
Of course, we're having a few. It's working right up. Well, that's okay, I can just wing it.
For memory.
What, tell us a joke?
No, please no, please no.
Now we're on our days, we're joking. Alexa in here, Alexa tells me a joke every day.
I can take a stab out of this South Side nine-one-one.
You don't need a presentation for that, but we're still just trying to record everything. No, we're not ready to go yet.
Okay.
What was it called, Chip?
That's right.
Now we can start.
D V Council, D V Mayor. Uh, tonight, I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of an update on some of the work that we've been doing with Johnson Controls, as many of you probably recall. Uh, we entered into two separate contracts about, oh, I think it's about a year, year and a half ago. Also, just for quick introductions, I've got Vera and Lou with Johnson Controls here to answer any questions you might have. I'm gonna kinda spearhead through about five slides to kinda talk a little bit about an energy, um, efficiency project that we've been working on with Johnson Controls specifically for three of our existing buildings, but I also threw in a little bit of a recap on where we were at with, uh, our reuse facility. Um, I know Councilmember Carmody, you had asked a little bit about kinda where we were at with that. So I'm gonna give you kind of a snapshot on some things that have happened in, um, the recent months that have slowed that process down. Um, so, we wanted to take this opportunity during the study session to kinda give you updated on that. So we'll start out with that specifically, on the reclaimed water facilities projects. Unfortunately, we're not successful with our solar grant applications that we had. We had solar projects identified from across the street here at the W R F. Both projects, unfortunately, were not successful in being selected, uh, through Department of Commerce grants. Another round of grant opportunities should come up next year, um, so we're optimistic that a lot of this work that we've done is still very viable for us to continue to move forward with that project, um, but it basically bumped us about a year, 'cause after a few discussions, um, with Johnson Controls staff, um, it basically did not pencil anymore, short answer, uh, for us to not have those additional grant funds to kinda seed it. The return on investment, usually you want it to turn over at about every thirteen, about thirteen years in a twenty-year cycle, and I'll walk you through what that means a little bit more in a table that's coming up ahead, um, to kinda explain where, in order to qualify for those grants, you need to hit kind of a specific point where the investment, uh, the savings now outweighs the investment, so any of that debt that you're paying off at about that thirteen-year mark, you're gonna want it so that you're now actually making money from those previous investments. Um, the core purpose that we retained JCI was for this energy and solar savings expertise, which they have a lot of. Um, and the solar was a key component with what we were doing with the W R F. Um, those energy-saving efforts for the reclaimed water facility, um, are always gonna be considered. Um, what we're looking at doing at this point now, we've kind of moved into some study requirements the Department of Ecology required as we were working through the facilities modification for the W R F. That's really slowed down the process, and it's kinda left things sitting dormant and idle, uh, with our ESCO Johnson Controls with doing any of the energy savings, and with the, you know, with removal of the solar project, at this point, it did not make sense to contractually move forward with JCI. As you might recall, this contract is administered through the state of Washington, through Department of Enterprise Services, so we're working with Peter Rabington and their department, um, kind of a closeout with JCI on this contract, and then renewing our contract for another year for the energy efficiency work. That applies to the new City Hall building, old City Hall, um, the community center, public safety building, um, and a little bit of work also out of the W R F and public works. So there was five buildings in total that we studied in that separate contract. So hopefully I'm explaining this, so, right now, we're basically saying, we, we're gonna cancel the one contract, um, get that closed out so that Johnson Controls can be paid for the energy savings proposal work, which still has a lot of value added to us, um, and allow us to move on to that into next year's period, but those contract terms would then be renewed through the Department of Enterprise Services through that ESCO process. Um, so with us losing this time, it didn't make sense to continue with, with a contract that's due to expire. Yes?
So I was under the understanding that they were, that JCI was gonna actually help us with the, um, reclamation of the water, or the refurbishment of the reclamation facility itself, like with the different, um, the, the membrane and all of the different, um, equipment and controls and stuff like that there. Um, is that not the case? And if so, how come, I mean, if they, were, were they supposed to be helping us with that?
They were, um, and I can, and I can explain that, 'cause there's some layers to this onion. So with the ESCO as an energy savings company, that they specialize in those opportunities to find efficiencies. It could be solar, it could be lighting, it could be HVAC, it could be different pump designs, for example, with the W R F. The bulk of this design work does fall to a subconsultant, in this case, we've been working with Kennedy Jenks as a subconsultant that has been helping assist Johnson Controls with that design. They kind of became the lead, so example, um, the initial contract that we entered into with Johnson Controls, which was just over, I think, one-point-three, one-point-four million dollars in consulting costs, potentially, for just this one contract, about eight-hundred to nine-hundred thousand of that was a subconsultant by the name of Kennedy Jenks. So, um, there was also Donahue, which was another subconsultant in there to oversee what was happening with Kennedy Jenks, kind of as an intermediary with some expertise in environmental science and environmental engineering. Um, us moving to more of a traditional path isn't necessarily a slight against any Johnson Controls had done, uh, but the bulk of that cost is still being borne by consultants in a very traditional manner. So, without this, the energy savings being a larger component, we're paying probably a little bit more than we should. And so by stopping at this point, uh, working on the study that we have under a separate contract for the impairment analysis and entry degradation work that we're doing at Cochrane Park, that's all gotta get done ahead of this before we can continue with design. So, we're gonna have to slow down to go a little bit faster in the future, but that's all progressing quite well right now, and we're actually in the point where we have a draft study plan, we'll be going to Ecology with probably in the next couple of weeks, and then that'll give us a good timetable on what's gonna happen at Cochrane Park, and then also get us back on track for when we can start our engineering and design work. But we also have some rate review and some things to discuss as well, so, um, we don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves with, um, potential impacts up to rates with design, um, so that's gonna be coming up again here in like September with another contract uh, for us to do a financial review, uh, both water and utilities, um, and our system development charges, so that's a little heads up on some things that are coming in September. So any questions thus far? We've covered quite a bit of ground here.
You did say that because of the solar aspect of the, that we would try to re-enter the contract with them next year when we apply for the grants? Is there a, I know we're looking ahead now, but is there a need, since we've gotten the proposal, all their stuff, is there a need to bring them back in again at that point, since we have everything done?
I, I don't think it, it, it's really a kind of a s- review of the scope at that timing. What are, what are the application processes, have, have the rebate programs changed, is there anything significant, um, you know, that we should look at at that point, and I think we should evaluate it, 'cause it's not, not something, there's no harm in having the conversation, so, you know, we, we, we call them back in and we have that conversation about what benefits could you bring if we move forward with another round of grant opportunities? Is there any criteria that's significantly changed where we need to maybe update that energy savings proposal? I don't have the crystal ball, but, um, in my experience, I think a lot of things can change between a two-year biennial cycle at the state level, um, especially with some of it being federally funded programs, there could be some rule changes down the road, but, um, like I said, I feel confident that the work that we have is still very tangible to the work we're doing, so. So, one of the core things I wanna talk to, oh, yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, so I know we spent a whole lot of money to do this, and I know we talked about, we had JCI come in and give us a whole bunch of really positive conversation about how we were gonna, they felt we were gonna get these grants with their, with their expertise and their experience and their connections, and I think if, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're telling me, I think, is everything failed, nothing happened. We weren't able to get any grants, we weren't able to get anything. We spent a bunch of money, and now you're saying we should end this contract, that we've already spent a bunch of money on, we did another study, paid a lot of money for another study, and you're telling us that we should probably not go into another contract with them, but maintain a, a, a different contract that we have with them? Is that, is that correct?
Let me see if I can sift through that a little bit, 'cause there's a couple, two or three things there. Initially, we had two separate contracts. One was to work on the W R F, um, and looking at this next phase, which was a significant investment, and looking for the maximum way that we could reduce operating costs, make it as efficient as possible, um, and seek out those opportunities, and that's where JCI came forward and said, we could, we could help you with that. We also did a separate contract, um, at my request and through some of our negotiations with them to say, let's have a separate contract for our facilities away from this fairly expensive project that may have better opportunities down the road to compete. So now you've got two separate opportunities, if you will. The design work that we've been putting in is going to continue. So with the W R F, the money that we're spending today, or have spent today, is not lost money, it's going to continue with that design. The studies that we had to do, for example, with Kennedy Jenks for Cochrane Park, that was the fallout of us going to Ecology saying, we want to amend our facilities plan to go with a more emerging technology, a better opportunity for us to save costs for capital costs and operating costs in the future with the M B R process. They came back and said, welcome to Water Reuse Rules two thousand seventeen, you're the first in line, and this is the study you need to do. Because we go to ground with about fifty thousand, you know, gallons a day of water to Cochrane Park. So as long as we are groundwater recharging, we trigger the rules. So that, that's where we kinda ended up here on three different contracts on different paths, so.
So we have three contracts with JCI?
No, we have one with Kennedy Jenks directly.
Okay, understood.
They had strong expertise, and then we selected them through an RFQ process. Um, and then we had the two contracts that we entered into through the Department of Enterprise Services about a year and a half ago, Johnson Controls.
Right, right, well, my concern is, Chad, is I'm sure you remember a, you know, my comment from before that it's more money on more studies. And like, that, that was a concern going into this, and like I said, we, we agreed to this, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, Council, but these were, you know, these were more or less, this is, with, with us, this is, this is doable, we can do this. And I can understand a hundred percent, things don't always work out, but it sounds like a hundred percent things didn't. Other than we did another study, and now we have this information to move forward, but, and, and I get that you wanna end that contract, and that's, I firmly agree with you. Um, but what I'm curious about is, in the, you know, in the world of business, it seems like if somebody, you know, makes a deal with you and doesn't follow through to even partially a degree that, you know, I, I, as a, you know, as, as, you know, somebody who's hiring somebody, I wouldn't feel comfortable with, well, you know, you did your best there, let's go ahead and try again at, you know, our cost.
You bring up a good point, and, um, the uniqueness of the ESCO process that I think, um, I tried to emphasize, but it's been a while since we talked about this, so it's good that you're, I like to be tested on these things, appreciate it. Um, there's three outs. One is we do an investment-grade audit, which is that low-cost, Johnson Control comes in and says, take a high-level look and see if there's some opportunities to save energy, and that's a stopping point under our contract to say, we just don't like where this is going, or we can't afford it. We went further than that and said, we like what we're seeing, we see there's opportunity, let's do an energy savings plan. Um, and we hired them to go ahead and do that, do that first contract.
Well, we liked what we were seeing based off of the information they were providing us, correct?
Correct, and they, they gave us the best information they had available, which is, if you're successful in finding grant opportunities, this, this is a financial model that will work in order for this project to be viable.
Right, and I get that, they gave us the best that they had, the ability to provide us, but we were told that their ability to provide us good quality, accurate information was in the, in their history and their experience, in their years of, uh, of doing this kind of work. That's where I'm a little bit, you know, that's, that's a lot of money spent to come back to say, hey, sorry, nothing more, just.
Well, I just, I wanna emphasize that I'm not trying to devalue the effort that's gone into it. The majority of the expense that has gone into this contract has been to the subconsultant who's been doing the process design for the water reclamation facility.
And I don't, and I'm not, certainly not trying to take away from any effort that anybody put into it, I'm, my concern is the ability to provide uh, end result, you know, that it, that I personally feel we were kinda led to believe that, uh, you know, our odds were clearly a lot better than where we ended up.
I, I would agree, but competitive process with grants, I think that's the, the, the difficulty in this whole situation is knowing, I mean, you can't have the, you can't always be a hundred percent when there's two-hundred-and-fifty, you know, solar grant applications, and there's only awards for sixty-four or sixty-two, depending on the scale.
But we've spent a lot less money and done, got the same results. We could've received nothing and spent nothing, but we spent money to what, like, once again, I believe we were led in the direction of, these folks are the, the, gonna be the key to helping us get to where we're, we're trying to get to. I'm, obviously, I don't believe that they, that one hundred percent, they should've been able to provide every possible thing that they said could possibly be, but once again, we, seeming from where I'm sitting, doesn't seem like we really got anything other than more information from another study.
Well, my goal would bring the, bring that information forward next year for opportunities, and I think learning from this round of grant applications and understanding what would push us into a more competitive position, I think we gotta take a lesson learned from that, uh, going into next years, 'cause all that data, like I said, I, I'm with you. I don't like to just take a study, spend the money, and shove it on the shelf. I wanna show some tangible results for that investment, 'cause it's an investment in knowledge, so with this knowledge, we should garner something. Um, so I'm not gonna sit back and just pretend like we didn't, you know, we were unsuccessful, but if I did that, we'd never get transportation dollars if every time I didn't quite get to the competitive level, but I have to learn from that and move on, so I'm hoping we can do the same with this one.
Joe, uh, Councilmember DePinto had a chance.
Thank you, um, first of all, I, I do agree with, um, Councilmember Wood on, that we got sold on a lot more than we got. Um, I think it was embellished of what the abilities were to achieve these grants, but in JCI's defense, they have a contract with us in the, in the past, not just on this project, but, um, for years, it, is that accurate?
Uh, I wouldn't say for years, at least the, in the time that I've been here, this is the first two contracts that I've done with Johnson Controls.
I apologize, I thought they were, um, with us for a few years, different contracts, on multiple contracts.
Unless I'm missing anything, I don't, I don't.
There might be some, if it's with our system, that I couldn't be all from on the edge, so I'm not aware of that, but, yeah, you're right, we've been in discussions and all that in the last two years or so.
Okay, 'cause I, I thought through other state sessions, they've been around from other stuff, but perhaps not, but, um, I, I understand it's a really competitive grant process. My question is, how many grants do we apply for through this, um, with JCI, and, um, do we get any feedback on where we went wrong or where we fell short at, and what can we do to, to improve on it next time?
I think the main takeaway that I received, and, and, yeah, we had quite a few discussions, um, and debates with folks at Commerce, and I, I won't speak negatively about how the process was administered at the state level, but it was, um, somewhat inconsistent, and there was a lot of, uh, what's called newness, uh, to the process that made it very confusing for applicants, and in a lot of ways, um, the process itself, for those folks that were on the other end trying to review these applications and really understanding what, what a complete application looked like was one great debate that we had, and then also, how are we actually scoring some of the specific criteria when there was some inconsistencies that we were seeing? We even included the Attorney General's Office in some decisions to try to make sure that, um, they handle this a little bit better in the future. They did a good job of follow-up and feedback, but that process was supposed to be a four-month application to an award letter. It took more like ten, almost twelve months before we got any response back, and so we were just as probably frustrated as just about every other applicant out there.
How many did we apply for, grant-wise?
There was two, uh, grants to apply for, one was specific for the solar program, and the other was for energy efficiency project.
And what were the maximum amounts on those that we were seeking?
Three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for, for both the programs, um, like you had a cap, it cannot be more than fifty percent of the project cost or thirty percent of the project cost, but the maximum amount was three-fifty each.
Each?
Three-fifty and three-hundred each, I think it was, something like that, for six-hundred thousand-ish.
There were a shortfall around seven-hundred?
Six-hundred to seven-hundred a thousand.
If I remember correctly, I think with our energy efficiency application, which was more for our facilities, we pulled back a little bit to try to stay competitive, because asking for the maximum in both situations oftentimes is not, it, it doesn't have good optics at the review level, especially if you're getting to the, to the tail end of the list, and you might be that project that only needs two-hundred. Um, so there's always, and I worked on this a lot with, with Peter White, and just where's the perfect sweet spot for us to try to target, and so, we had to max out on solar because of the level of money we were asking for, um, and then we backed down a little bit on the energy.
Thank you, yeah, you bet.
Can you just give me a, just a really quick run-through of what the grant process looked like with them? Did you like send them a copy, then they sent it back with feedback and revisions, like how did they, just a really quick run-through, two minutes or less, how the grant process worked with them?
Um, a lot of emails, a lot of conference calls, um, a lot of last-minute, I'll be honest, I spent a three-day weekend um, in my office finalizing the applications. Um, I think the biggest challenge was there was, um, little nuances, here's a great example, this building, for example, is a timber-constructed residential standard building. Nobody would've known that if we hadn't sent a structural engineer to go up there and go, did you know there's no steel in this building, other than your columns? Well, we can't put solar panels on this building, and that was originally one concept that we came forward with. Now we have to have a letter to support that we can't put solar here, and we have to have another piece of correspondence that says we're gonna move it across the street, and how's that now gonna be handled? And oh, by the way, you have a Washington Historic Landmark called Your Water Tower over here now, that we have to like study what the shadowing effect is of solar panels on this potentially glorious registered water tank. So, that all happened in the last two weeks before this application was due, of just really going through the process, sending a list, um, having Vera and his group come back and forth. They did a really good job, I think they, um, that ninth-hour stuff is oftentimes hard to pull together, uh, but I think they, having the majority of the information in the energy savings proposal, that E S P document, which is about yay thick, it's about five, six hundred pages of information, that's the control of being a competitive applicant for the solar. So having that, filling in other six or seven pieces, um, that part went fairly well. They're very responsive, it was never, uh, I'm just sitting here waiting, waiting, waiting for days, it was, it was a matter of a few hours, and they were giving me that data back, so.
Did they ever, they might be, did they review your final grant proposal before you submitted it?
Was.
The final one, and they sent back, and then the last question, when they did their feasibility study, why wasn't, were those things that you figured in the ninth hour, why weren't those things figured out when they did their feasibility? And they did that energy thing, they said, put solar panels on here, why wouldn't they have known those things? Like, we can't put them on here because of the building.
Well, at that point, we didn't know that the structural review was required until we got the application instructions, and it said, if you can't, you have to prove why you can't. So if you can't mount it on this building, why do you wanna move it across the street? 'Cause our idea was to do solar carports.
And that's not your fault, but why didn't they know that? That's, that's their, their whole job was to tell us what we could do to be energy efficient, they told us we could do something.
It had been reviewed, but there was no, it was, in the case of an application, we needed it signed and stamped by the actual structural engineer that reviewed the building, so we had to come back, add a different trip to make sure that he could certify it, 'cause otherwise they wouldn't accept it as part of the application.
You guys didn't figure that out till the very end, last two weeks, just the last week?
I didn't say it was an easy process.
Yeah, it was a few weeks, and then the thing is, we didn't have drawings either, so we had to have structural engineers. Usually when we have drawings, we can flip through the drawings and say, hey, you know what, this thing needs more attention, or it's good. But we didn't have drawings, probably because you guys had just purchased it, and I think we were still going through the paperwork of getting all the stuff from the previous owner, so we had to.
Yeah, this building was the only one we didn't have structure for. We had electrical and mechanical and some of the other components, so that when we did that energy savings proposal, we had, they had good data for that, but, again, we had just acquired the building, just, I think, two, three of the rents prior to that.
Just purchased it, you didn't have those plans.
So it, it might've, okay, I just, I'm just trying to figure out why they said we should do it, and there are the experts on it, but we couldn't do it, but it would look like they didn't have a, they just kind of guessed we could do it, but they didn't know we could do it, because they didn't have the drawings.
Correct, yeah, so the takeaway, uh, to get, uh, back to Councilmember DePinto's question, the biggest takeaway that we took from this is, we had too many sites to be as competitive as we would've liked, so we would probably want to break those sites apart, kinda like the school districts, I think, there was something learned from some of the school district applications that I saw. They did a better job of being site-selective for each application, where we had some that where we had three or four sites kind of conglomerated into one application, um, I think it would've been, it, one, it leads to sometimes mistakes, like those little details of each facility, um, and not being able to have that as transparent as you want for the person reviewing the application. With some feedback that I got from them, was like, you had four or five sites in one application, we're, we've got this grocery list for each facility that we're supposed to go through, and it, it can, there's the information that can get lost by the reviewer, and I think that's where we ran into some problems, so, hence part of what we're looking at.
So this, um, all of this work that we've already done on this, we can use this same work product for a future application, is that correct?
That would be my expectation, yes. That would be the first to admit.
Wasn't wasted money then?
No, well, I'll be the first to admit that, uh, this is not my wheelhouse, but I've learned a tremendous amount in about a year and a half um, on how these programs work, um, but I, I think there's still a lot of good information that we guard. Um, unless we start selling buildings, which we, at this point, I don't think have any intention of doing, the buildings that we wanna look at are ones that we will have long-term residency as far as city government goes. Any other questions so far, it's a great discussion. So, um, what I'll walk you through real quick is kind of the proposal that I've been working on with JCI here recently, um, just a couple more slides, we'll get through this together. Right now, what we focus more on is determining what's the viability of any of these other state facilities, and is it still? city facilities and is it still pencil or is it still cost-effective for us to consider doing some retrofits on some lighting and some HVAC work? So out of that effort, we came up with three city facilities that we considered that were probably equitable, and so I'm gonna walk you through why that, why that conclusion was made. Um, the three sites specifically, um, you'll see us refer to EEMs, which is just, we're going to be doing basically lighting work. Um, right now, we did lighting fixture counts, those won't change because in the retrofit, we're gonna use a lot of the same locations, the same lighting, but we'll be moving to a more efficient LED type lighting. Um, so when we look at costs associated with that, we're looking at moving over, um, to LED and then better control systems for the HVAC systems. Um, most of the ones we have in our buildings are not very efficient, so that's something else we wanted to look at from an operations and maintenance savings standpoint. Um, we wanna improve the lumens, right? We wanna move, improve the lighting for lower cost. Um, and then we wanna expect a lot more reliability. Ballasted lighting tends to fail quite frequently. Any of us have worked in offices for a long time, when ballast goes out, you actually have a, you have to have a licensed electrician come and repair ballasting. It's, it can be expensive over time, so we went away from that as kind of the, the current trend. So this looks like a lot of information, but basically it's just to kinda get you some specifics on which air handling units we were gonna look at. Uh, we were gonna look at Public Works Facility out off Rotten, where I'm at, uh, New City Hall, where we're at tonight, and then looking at the lower sentence there on public safety, we would be looking at replacing over at Todd's facilities, um, the DDC system, which is basically all of your controls. So we would retain the existing air handling units and the HVAC units, put in better control systems, um, so that we can make that operate more efficiently. Um, so right now, we'd be looking at lighting and HVAC in this building as well as over at Public Works and then specifically in public safety, um, we would be looking at control systems only. Any questions on that? Yeah?
Is there guarantee, even if we terminate this contract, is there a guarantee still apply for that refund if we don't get our thirteen, you know how they promised us that we'd save X amount of dollars and if we don't, they pay, you remember that, this?
That, this probably is, we're past that point. At this point, this is where I think, um...
Well, hang on, ask them, that's a good.
All right, let's ask questions.
So the, the, uh...
Deal or no deal, Johnson Control.
The investment grade audit, uh, contract that we had for, for the solar grant application was to put together an investment grade audit that would end up with a proposal for the grant application that would say, "Hey, if you get this grant, you would fund a project up to this amount." So while we didn't get the grant, so while we didn't, but we wanted to chat, "Hey, without the grant, what is a project that we can fund?" And that's what that, that is. So at the end of the day, the guarantee for the energy savings is when you implement a project, you get X amount of dollars a year and guarantee that we, we would, uh, guarantee for you to realize if not, we write the check. So that's the energy guarantee over the state contract, that's what the DES contract allows or requires us to do. Now, for the investment grade audit fee, that's kind of what we already spent on generating the application, generating the grant application, the, you know, the binder, uh, chat talk we've talked about, that's already some cost, so to speak.
Yeah.
I'm just saying for these projects that you guys came up with these together, these projects, the guarantees on these projects.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's where DES requires it, they have to guarantee and then you'll also see there's, in these first few years, you'll see this performance management criteria that is also the, if I remember correctly, if I'm wrong, is the time that you have required to go out and continue to show that we are actually getting those reduced productions and costs.
The three years is a minimum and then after that it's optional, but the state requires three years of minimum guarantee to demonstrate that we are making the savings, if not, then obviously we, we are unaccountable for the shortfall.
Thank you. So basically this, to quickly recap, so right now, what we're looking at, and this is just one possible scenario, I mean, these dollars up here are really up to you and really all I'm asking for from the council tonight is give this some thought and consideration and some future direction to staff on whether we'd like to move forward with this. Um, the way that, the numbers they, we ran the first time was for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars down at three and a quarter percent for twenty years, which is about the interest rate that they're getting through, through a couple of different sources that JCI could help us with the financing on, for a total project of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, again, that would cover replacement of the HVAC lighting in here, at the Public Works Facility and the control systems over at the PSB. The savings differences that you'll see when we talk about things is your total savings is here, your loan payments are here. So when you get to about year thirteen, like I had mentioned previously, that's when those numbers flip, where your savings are now outpacing your investment. Does that make sense? So like when we apply for grants, you actually have to show that after thirteen years, you're still, you, you have to show this change. If you can't show it in thirteen years, that's when we start to look at these projects as not being very viable, um, because your age and deterioration after that point starts to go downhill, your life cycles start to reduce and then you start looking at the next cycle for replacement or repairs or higher repair costs associated with the equipment you put in. So there's a question there.
How old are the HVAC systems at Public Works and in this, this building we're in now?
The HVAC units were built in, uh, two thousand, when that facility was constructed. Um, this building, oh, there's five different units. Um, I can't tell you when they were replaced, uh, when Fairpoint, but there's only two that are original, I believe, of the five air handlers in this building.
And when was this building built?
I believe the early eighties, if memory serves. I'm gonna look at you, Michael. I can't remember. It's, it's, it's gotta be the eighties, but yeah, so...
Well, they should, they should know, right? Because they did the study to say that we could improve them.
Well, I don't recall, but I do have the information in the binder, so.
Okay. We do have all the history on the building, it's just a matter of, I, I don't know, and I think we had to make some assumptions on when, I mean, we have service tags on them, so when we evaluated them and we came out inspected and we wrote the, where they wrote the report, they based it on the age and the maintenance records that were...
So the, uh, existing system, we can say at Public Works is almost twenty years old.
Correct.
So we're, what we're, what we're kinda looking at here is over a twenty-year period, paying off a new unit that in, I, I'd be willing to wager that if the old one lasted twenty years, this one's, we'd be lucky to get fifteen out of it. The way they build things today. Um, but, uh, so it just seems like it's a, that's, I mean, you're, you're looking at, are you asking three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is that what we're looking at as far as a loan?
So at this point, the loan is really subjective, so if you...
I'm saying with, with everything, everything on there that you, that you're asking.
For this, it'd be about two hundred and fifty-five in loan, if we were to bring four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in local dollars to bear, or four hundred and twenty thousand, yes.
Where would this come from?
Well, this would be from the building fund. Right now, we have four hundred thousand dollars in budget remaining with the Johnson Controls that has not been expended, um, in the building fund, in this current by any of them. And that was there for these down payments, the match money that require, to meet those requirements to be grant eligible.
This is already in the budget then?
Four hundred thousand is, yes. It's not specific for this project, it was designed for both projects as the match for the solar and the energy efficiency grant, so that's where I wanted to come back to council and say, "We're bringing this down a different, to a different scale, but we're not making a two million dollar investment where our loan is now one point, you know, four million or one point six. We're now down into a different, more manageable level depending on how that works." The debt service on this, on the loan payment to the general fund, if it were all general fund, which it wouldn't be because anything to do with the Public Works Facility, we would balance some of those costs with the utilities since that's where we warehouse our water operators and our facilities there. But right now, you know, you're under, except for the first year's payment, um, you're under twenty thousand dollars a year in investment. So if the savings are realized, um, then those costs are even lower, but that's where those first three years are key, to show that demonstration that, yeah, we're saving the money that they, they said that we would with these improvements, so. Hopefully that, that is true.
Yes, thank you.
So if we didn't replace the, uh, the twenty-year-old Public Works HVACs, do you any idea what kind of life expectancy there would be out of those?
I think they are, I mean, have past useful life, you know, usually ASHRA standards say that your equipment is between fifteen to twenty years, they maintain at manufacturer's recommended levels. So they are, they are right now.
So they're, they're based off of a standard set by the manufacturer?
Yeah, and ASHRA, which is the American Heat and Heating Association, they are kind of the industry standard, so they kinda set all the standards for equipment, useful life and all that.
So there's never a perfect number, just like a hot water heater at home.
No, I understand, but...
It works one day, it doesn't, but we're just trying to protect, you know, project when, if this is the right time or not.
I get it, but I own, I own two commercial units. I just replaced them a couple of years back. They were originally put up there in nineteen eighty-five. Um, they lasted quite a bit more than fifteen to twenty years.
And we do our best to also maintain our equipment, you know?
Sure, and I absolutely believe that, I think that's why I'm concerned that we're in a rush to replace something that, you know, I mean, did, it, it, was the only, uh, the only indication that we needed to replace these other than the, the sources that they've cited, the, the manufacturer as well as the, the organization that is, you know, their...
You mean a specific location?
No, I, I'm curious if, uh, if anybody else gave you, looked at these units? Has anybody else looked at these units or is it just JCI looked at them, do it, and due to what the manufacturer recommends and what the, uh, the union recommends, we should replace these? I'm just curious if we've had a second opinion on those.
I've had some feedback from Bradley Air, who's our current maintenance contract. Definitely some of the control system issues that we were having on Todd's building and the public safety building is contributable to not age and not just wear parts, but control system problems, which is why we've kinda narrowed that down as a potential, the age of those facilities, as you know, is much younger. Um, but I promise you, we've had a lot of problems with those units on that building more than I have at, uh, over off Rotten Road. So, um, but larger units, larger square footage, I mean, there's, there's variables that we, we're just trying to consider. For me, it comes down to, are we gonna save money at some point? Um, so if we make the investment now and, you know, you get twelve million dollars in rebates on top of this as well for lighting, um, is it, is it worth it, is right, is now the right time for the right amount, for the right reasons? I mean, it's asset management one-on-one for me, whether, whether that's, whether it's perfect, I, I can't say definitively. Um, that's why I'm here, just kinda making a recommendation. This is a second step that we've gone through, now that we've kind of gone past, okay, we didn't get the grants, what options are, what potential's still out there so that the money that we've invested, um, in all this study, um, bears some fruit that we can recognize in some savings and having newer equipment and better, you know, better facilities in the next ten to twenty years. So that's my hope.
So I'm just looking at the savings versus loan payment. The savings just calculated electric or is it maintenance, electric, parts? Like how do you guys, because I, I want, at the end of the year, are we gonna have like, "Here's our electric bill, look, it's twenty-five thousand dollars lower, we can just pay that loan payment with that." Like what is the savings you guys calculate?
Yeah, we've got electric, gas, um, for the, on the fuel side, uh, and then we have operational savings with the lighting because you got ballast replacement, that's the upstairs, um, so that's shown in the, uh, column, uh, for columns, I guess, or that sheet. Um, so those are kind of the components of the savings, fuel, electric and, yeah, and ops.
So in theory, at the end of the year, we'll have an extra twenty-five thousand dollars because we didn't spend it on fuel, electric leftover and then we can just pay the loan with that, like for the first year, I'm just looking at year one.
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah. So that's, okay.
And that's the, that's the way we just kind of modeled this project to say, hey, you know, there are, we looked at a few other things and some of them were much more expensive with not a lot of benefit and we went through a couple of iterations with Chad and figured out, hey, where's the sweet spot where your investment is X and you can still have a viable project at the end of twenty years. Um, that was it, this. So that's why we took out the solar, we took out the stuff that had more, much more dead weight, so to speak, on the cash flow, we pulled those out.
Yeah, it's a large capital expense upfront and it takes a much longer period of time to recognize the savings on the solar side, so that's where it, without the grants to interject, um, to see that, they don't, they don't necessarily effectively see that rate of return within that first thirteen-year cycle. So that's basically all I had, so. If you have any other questions, um, I'm not looking necessarily for any direction tonight, I just wanted to kinda brief you on a couple of different things on what's happening with the, you know, the progress with JCI and the WRF side and then also let you know that we're still kinda walking down this path to looking at some energy savings, you know, in some of these other city facilities that looked viable, so that's it.
And this is actual work too, right? Like we pay four hundred thousand dollars, that's all going to actual work, parts, labor, putting stuff in, not making sure that we can...
The binder.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're not yet making another binder and this is what we could, look at, look at how it looks when we...
More binders.
Yeah.
This would be tangibles and this, um, there, there's a lot of pricing control that we have if we move forward with this project and that's kind of, goes back to some of the original pitch from JCI on, on book pricing, things like that, so that we don't have to, um, you know, really finagle contracts, we can, this, a lot of this pricing's already set, so it, it does make the project a little smoother if we factor forward, so. But I'll, I'll plan to bring some additional information to you, uh, probably next month and then, you know, we'll try to make, uh, bring something more formal for your consideration. So we have to have a little bit more internal discussions, I think, Michael and I and GW and kinda see the path forward, so, thank you.
Hey, Chad, in the future, when we go down this road again, can we get more, um, more updates more often?
Yes.
Like, "Hey, guys, we applied for the grant on X day," you know what I mean? We haven't heard from the state, we haven't heard from the state, we haven't, just touchbacks are really helpful.
Yeah, I think I, in the past, I've tried to use them through some of Michael's updates, but if you want something a little bit more formal, I'm happy to make sure that it's coming out of my mouth and, or I drop, drop information to you in the format that you guys wanna see.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
You bet.
Very good. Officer Moody. We, uh, moved our agenda around to accommodate your being out there and taking care of business.
Thank you guys very much.
Do you have a presentation now?
Not a real quick, it's just not a real presentation, it's just a quick request, I don't take a lot of your time, I'm on kind of a quick break here.
Criminals are waiting for you.
Officer?
They're waiting for you. Break themselves.
So anyway, uh, as you all know, uh, work for the city, uh, I've been a part of a committee outside the city for quite a while, working with TCOM and they're replacing our current nine-one-one radio system. Not representing the city or the police department, myself individually, my wife works for TCOM and when I was at my other job, I was a part of that committee, so it just kinda transferred over. What we're doing now, the committee's gotten together, which is outside of TCOM, my director, Keith and Wendy Hill aren't here, they don't know where the legal boundaries lie as far as what they can request from city councils as far as support goes, so Doug Law and our council have gotten together and said, "We'll go out, we'll talk to the councils." And I talked to Rainier and Bakota and I've still gotta go down to Tonato and talk to them about the same issue. So essentially what we're asking for is your guys' consideration for support on the replacement of the nine-one-one system. Uh, the current system was installed nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, it's a analog system that needs to be upgraded to digital. Uh, there's been two or three different times it's supposed to been fixed that we've kinda put it off because of a recession per TCOM, so they haven't been able to fix it. Now, there are parts that can't be replaced, they're not even manufacturing some of the parts, so we're kind of to a point, we're broken, that if we don't fix it, uh, if this doesn't go in through the one-tenth to one percent sales tax, then they've gotta look at other sell, uh, financial options, which could be back to user fees that we got rid of quite a few years back to pay for it. It's gotta get fixed, it's gotta be replaced, so this was the easiest thing that they came up with in their committee was the one-tenth to one percent, uh, sales tax across the country. So what we're doing is walking around, going around to each one of the councils saying, "We look at it, uh, not looking for any financials or anything like that, just if you guys feel it's the right thing to do." If, uh, in this case, we've put together a, a resolution, kind of a generic resolution, that if you want to, I can send it over to the city manager, who can actually put it in your format. Uh, if you wanted to go ahead and show the support this way, and then we can actually put it on our website. We have a say yes to nine-one-one website that tells everything that we've been doing. It's a thirty thousand dollar replacement cost, or thirty million dollars.
I was gonna say, wow.
That was something else, thirty million, uh, the thirty thousand dollars was, uh, Chief Stansel had told me, he said, that's what it would cost to replace our current radio systems. That's all rolled into that, so essentially, passing that buys us all new radios, TCOM programs them, then they issue them out to the different entities. Uh, the other one is the big officer safety and firefighter safety stuff, is currently, we can't talk to Pierce County if there's a, a pursuit. Today, our fire guys were over in Pierce County, and they couldn't talk to them, they had to get a Pierce County radio to communicate with them, so we have a big breakdown in communications where someone can obviously get hurt. And the obvious is it's analog and everything now is so, it's gone digital, and it'll actually probably change in the next ten years, if there's nothing else. So, that's just for you guys to look at, and you guys can take it wherever you want to. Uh, I just wanted to come in here and ask if you guys would consider the support, and answer any questions that you might have. Keith and Wendy both said they'd be more than happy to come in and talk to you guys at the council meeting, answer any questions that you might have, any further questions, or, whatever you want. We just are looking for the support. Yes, ma'am?
Um, for the user fee, you mentioned a user fee, what would that look like?
Chief Stansel had given us a number, what was it, does it, Chief?
Yeah, so we used to pay user fees, uh, to TCOM, and it's all population-based, so back when we still paid user fees, we were in the ballpark of about twenty-five to thirty thousand a year.
So the city would pay, the city is the user, not an individual calling nine-one-one, and I gotta pay twenty-five cents.
Cities, right, so user fees, if they went back to implementing user fees based on our population today, we'd probably be in the ballpark of forty to fifty thousand a year, I would assume, uh, so it'd be, it'd be fairly substantial. And just to reiterate, just a little bit, uh, the, the safety of, of the communications between Thurston County and Pierce County, for Yelm is, is critical. We just had a pursuit, uh, Sunday night that went into Pierce County. The only way to communicate with Pierce County deputies is through their dispatch center. That's the only way we can relay, uh, communication, so it's something that has to happen, one way or another, it's, it, it has to happen. It's unfortunate that it's that much, but the price is only gonna go up. Uh, when they started this thing, it was about thirty million, and now they're even edging it up to thirty-five, forty million by the time it all gets done. So it, it, it's not getting cheaper. One of the things that he didn't mention that I think is key is that this, and maybe you didn't, this isn't a partnership with, uh,
The State Patrol.
State Patrol. So we're not building our own standalone system, we're actually partnering with the State Patrol system that has already proven and works, uh, which cuts down the cost quite significantly in the big picture. I know that's hard to say, it cuts down the cost, but it actually does cut down the cost in the, in the big picture of things, so.
Yeah, what would happen if this failed? Would we go to user fees?
And I, I don't wanna answer for those folks, because that, that would be a political decision that they would have to make, but that is one of the options that they have brought forth, is going back to user fees, so I don't know if they'd try to float a bond for it, or user fees, that would be a bigger decision.
What were some of the other options that were floated?
Was that?
What were some of the o- other options that were floated?
I didn't go to any of the county commissioner meetings or those meetings, I just, that was one of the things we had talked about, was.
Do you use far as how to pay for?
If the proposition failed, yes.
Yeah. I didn't, I haven't.
User fees is the only thing ever.
We're not gonna lose service, so I mean, we're still gonna be able to call nine-one-one and.
Within Thurston County, yeah. Within Thurston County, our radios will communicate with one another. It's really just communicating with outside counties that are all moved onto the digital world and.
And as I, I think we talked about the other day at the state committee, this, the cell phone tax that TCOM currently gets, uh, pays for you dialing nine-one-one up to the dispatcher who answers the phone, that's paid for. That'll be there as long as the cell phone, that cell phone tax goes on. What we're looking at is from the call receiving it, processing it through the computer system, talking over the radio, dispatching the fire and the police guys, and keeping us updated. That's the bigger part, that's the backend, that's what we're trying to fix and replace at this point. So the phone call's there, but this the other part we're working on.
Uh, and one thing you said, and I just wanna make sure this is true, you said that if TCOM, if this goes through, that you, Yelm will get the systa- everyone in Thurston County will get the system, it's not like we have to do another one in Yelm later on to get our own system, like, this applies for all of us, right?
Yeah.
And so, and that's, they're wanting to buy all the radios, I mean, I was a part of the group where we looked at five different vendors, looked at all these different options, and State Patrol, standalone, Pierce County, it actually honed out with this. They'll buy the radios through the, through the vendor, program everything, they will then issue them out to each individual agency. The question is, is they're gonna have Yelm maintain them, or is TCOM gonna maintain that responsibility? Which might be another cost that Tracy and the, uh, the admin work will be discussing in the near future.
Sure. So, Don, we're currently paying one-tenth of one percent sales tax for the existing nine-one-one TCOM system. That's already in existence, and this, this proposal would increase that by another one-tenth of one percent. Is there a sunset on that, or is this gonna be a permanent, uh, increase in the taxes?
It's a permanent, but this is the sales tax, I think the one-tenth of one percent on the sales, the cell phone tax.
Talking about this sales tax?
Well, this sales, and it's a, I believe it's a, it's permanently there in the system.
Yeah.
Cause the maintain, the maintenance and replacement and stuff like that for the future, so. Anybody else, I don't wanna keep much of your time, I know you guys have a lot of packed agenda. So again, if, if you could just consider it, uh, and, and I'm sure the chief or somebody will let me know on the road, I would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don, for using your lunch break to come in here and educate us, thank you.
Safe out there.
All right, and now, the moment southeast Thurston County Fire Authority has been waiting for, thank you for your patience, Jeff and Joyce.
GFD hand, uh, one of your fire commissioners for southeast, uh, fire authorities, I just wanna thank you, uh, mayor, council members, city manager, staff.
Here, I thought you were a deputy.
That actually was a very interesting talk, and I'd like to comment on that, but that's not, not why I'm here tonight, we had to switch uniforms, so. Anyhow, I brought along, uh, Joyce Wilms from Washington Media to, to, uh, help me out. First of all, I'd like to apologize, Mark, uh, Chief King had an engagement tonight, he'd like to be here, so again, he's done, uh, his best, and he will be here for any future, uh, questions or meetings that you guys have, he just could not make it tonight, so he asked, uh, asked that we could step in tonight and, and brief you, so, I think we passed that, everybody should have, uh, some information in front of them regarding, um, what we're here for tonight, so. Obviously, this'll be briefs, I know you guys, it's a full night, I know you guys might think this is, so, we're here tonight to talk about, um, the Fire Authority, uh, applying for the state Capitol facilities grant, okay, so obviously, not to go over your own stats, but I just wanna throw out a few things for you, obviously, we know, um, the service here, the fire protection, we obviously want twenty-four, seven fire protection, I know the mayor's got, uh, um, a lot vested in that entire career, so anyhow, it is important. Yelm, you guys' population, I believe, is over nine thousand and still growing. Um, the Yelm schools, obviously, are busting at the seams, we're at, we're at nine hundred students now, Joyce, and obviously, we, from bonds to levies, don't, we know how busy it is here in the city, and, uh, you guys are doing an outstanding job, I just wanna throw that out. I mean, as far as, I've been here for twenty-four years myself here in the Yelm community, and I think, I've, I mean, I, I know I've, I've seen some outstanding things going on here with the community, so with the growth, with the management, with the services, with all the different things that you guys have brought here, things outstanding, but obviously, fire protection, police services is an important part of having a, uh, great vibrant community. When you get schools, you know, it needs to be safe, and we need to have good emergency response, so this is an important thing that we're here tonight asking for, so the, um, we're obviously here, we're looking to, uh, for you guys' endorsement, or at least your consideration, um, to endorse the grant to remodel the fire station at Lake Lawrence. For those of you that don't know, the Lake Lawrence, which is, uh, Station Twenty-two, is located out here on one hundred and fifty-third, um, seventeen twenty-three, one hundred and fifty-third southeast, uh, it was built back in nineteen sixty-one. It's currently not even being used, it's been, obviously, it's more or less just for storage at this point in time. Uh, there used to be a little home in the back there, that's been tore down, there was a, a structure that was, uh, removed for safety concerns and whatnot, so we're obviously looking to not only remodel, but obviously, um, to, to build a new station there. Some of the things here with the new station, it would obviously give us twenty-four, seven coverage. Um, we would be able to house both volunteer and, and full-time firefighters. Not only for, uh, to house them, but obviously, we'd have living quarters, residents could work day and night and weekends. So it would be a very important thing, so why would it be important to, to Yelm here? Because obviously, our Fire Authority responds to, obviously, the entire, uh, community out here, to include Rainier. It approaches into the outskirts, uh, or the outskirts of Tonino there, as well as the butts up against Bald Hills, so it's a big fire authority, obviously. And, and fire services, uh, if calls, the service can come out there to the bail area, or parts of the Bald Hills, or elsewhere, obviously, it takes the personnel and equipment out of your community here. I know it's important for you guys to make sure you have the best coverage here, and you have outstanding coverage, but obviously, when calls the service that come out, that way, it does take away for, uh, from the community here. So, by being able to build a facility out there, by getting the grant to build that, uh, station up, it would keep services here in Yelm, it would actually, a twofer, I call it. Not only would it be good for the entire community, but also be good for, for the residents here within Yelm. Chris, what else you got to?
One of the things that's really important to remember, the traffic is terrible, as you guys all know. When there's a call, and they, they have to go on their fir- first call. Okay, so if they have a call, an emergency call at Lake Lawrence, we'll say. It can take forty minutes to just drive back and forth, and that's not time on the scene. Okay, so, the city of Yelm is without, without coverage. Who knows what's gonna happen if a, a child gets hurt, I say. You know, with five thousand nine hundred students here, we need a fire department here in Yelm twenty-four, seven. One of the things that we are asking for is your support and endorsement. I'm planning on writing a grant to the legislators again, for funding to help pay for the fire department, uh, the fire department out in Lake Lawrence area, but I'm gonna need your support, because if I have the support of the city council, when I go and lobby the legislators, you know, Richard Debold, um, Ed Orchid, and our local legislators, because they will listen to what you have to say. And without your support, it's harder to get the money. And this is about saving lives, you know, seconds do count. And I'm scared, and there was, let's say, heaven forbid, a shooting. The fire departments out at Lake Lawrence, they can't just leave, they have to stay on the scene out there until it's gone. With all the traffic and accidents and everything, I mean, we did a great job, and the fire department is doing a great job right now. But the citizens of Yelm deserve better than what they're getting. And I do ask for your support on a bond or on a grant that I'll be writing. And, um, I'd like to, I'll be writing up a resolution requesting your support. Does anybody have any questions?
So on this map that you guys gave to us, which, um, what area would the number twenty-two cover? Yelm here, would it just basically cover sort of this area? Or would it go just to Yelm city limits?
Obviously, because they'll be housing personnel twenty-four, seven, so obviously, it would, I don't have the, the map of these.
Okay, this one right here would be covering more of this area right here. Okay, then we have Rainier covering this, so, so Yelm would be covering this.
So Yelm would be covering this middle strip here?
Right, okay, now, let's say we have two phone calls, two emergencies, okay? Yelm is not gonna sit here, Yelm, the, the station in Yelm will have to go to that call. Or this, or Rainier would have to go. But likely, someone will be here most of the time.
We, we try to do that now, I mean, obviously, when calls come out, we try not to empty out the station and send them all out to a certain area to respond to a call, obviously, it's the, call dependent upon what, what the actual call is. This would just give us a better, I don't wanna use the word, but, uh, it would, higher probability of keeping services here in town regardless if we have another call out there, I mean, we'll be able to, you know, call upon, uh, the Rainier scythe, as well as the, uh, scythe, uh, that would be out there at Station Twenty-two.
Right, so, even though Yelm is like slated to be sort of the central strip, um, if there's a fire on fail cutoff road, then Station Twenty-two could take care of it?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Yes.
But just keep in mind, we had a, we had a fire out in, mind back of the woods, I just live outside of the city limits between Yelm and Rainier, and obviously, when you have a fire, I mean, they call resources, we have from District Six, we have, uh, Pierce Can, and we have people from, uh, um, over here from Lacey, I mean, they'll call, or West Thurston, I mean, they come from all over, depending on, obviously, the, the type of call it is, but yes, for most traditional calls of service, it would, we would be able to keep services here, um, in Yelm, as well as being able to service the, the people out there unincorporated, so. Fire District, and it's no different than Lacey, Lacey's a fire district as well, that's exactly the same thing that they do with theirs. Olympia's a fire depart, is, is the city fire department, as is Tom Order, but the rest are fire districts, so you still try to manage and keep your resources, obviously, this is the higher call volume, but make no mistake, unincorporated area has been growing, we've got housing developments going out, and, and calls of service have been going up, so it does pull resources outside the city and, and take away from potential, uh, response time from the citizens here in Yelm, so that's what we're just trying to kind of manage that, and, and, uh, find services to the entire Fire Authority District, so.
You know, we have eighty-four square miles that we're covering. That's a lot, and the firemen are doing the best they can, the paramedics are doing the best they can, but we need to have it's divided up a little bit more, and we're trying to get, keep the firefighters here in Yelm. Unless there's an all-out fire, I mean, and then you have fire departments for Olympia and everything. If the town caught on fire, you're gonna have fire, um, fire departments from all over.
All right, I wanna weigh in on this a little bit too, obviously, this was my career, I started, where I started the fire department here in Yelm back in ninety-six. And we had the same problem then, and we have it today too. It's a weird phenomenon, I have not encountered anywhere else in my career, it's the phenomenon of the back-to-back calls. I've never seen it like, anywhere, anywhere else, but here in Yelm, uh, to the point that when I would train the officers, uh, what's the first thing that you do when you arrive on the scene of a call? Their, the response was supposed to be, start planning for our response to the next call, because it was gonna come. And so, when you have your, your resources committed to one call, uh, to have that ability to have a backup, uh, to respond to the other call, especially in the more rural part of their district, is essential to keeping those response teams available. What I was concerned with was, you know, how are they gonna staff this station, and have identified that in a way that is, uh, has been very successful in other districts, where they put, uh, resident volunteers who are attending college, probably the District Nine program. So they're completely certified firefighters, EMTs, and, uh, they would be responding, and they're getting kind of a, you know, bonus, they get to live there as residents, uh, but they do the responses when they're on their shift, and it frees up the career staff and the other volunteers to do the other call, so. I, I like the model that they've put, put together for, uh, revamping a station that I used to use twenty-five years ago. Uh, and, um, and staffing it with a very, uh, efficient model, it's a good plan.
I had a quick question, I've been to the Bald Hills fire, like, fire station, I don't see it on here.
We don't, Bald Hills is not in our district.
Different fire district.
So they're like right, they're like right here though, right?
So, that's exactly it.
Yeah.
Fire district, we got.
Right.
So they're just outside.
And they're all volunteer, that's what I volunteer for.
Yeah, yeah, they have like one guy.
Just to, uh, mention on my other hat, the insurance premiums that will be saved if this is manned will be, you know, half, the, the residents out there will pay half the insurance premiums on their houses. It's, it's a reason for it, so, the reason is, if there is a fire, they can put it out before it's total loss, so I think it's really important that we consider supporting this, just to, more than safety, I mean, financial reasons as well.
Good neighbors.
Yeah.
Oh, it does state farm, sorry.
Joyce, question?
Yes?
It was just a comment, I agree with the other council members, the mayor, that we should be supporting this. Um, this is where I grew up, at Lake Lawrence area, and I know that fire station well, and there's that giant rock next to it. And it's unfortunate that they can't respond to someone in Lake Lawrence from that station. The time that, if this was right there right now, they could respond to it in minutes. Now, like they said, they have to go through Yelm and have to, or some other places. As supporting this, it's a grant application, so it's, we're not, uh, we're seeking funds from the state Capitol. You're not, we're not increasing taxes on people in Yelm. These folks have a Yelm address, while they're not inside the city limits, and we don't represent them technically, I mean, this is a way we can help represent them and help give them a voice that they otherwise wouldn't have, besides the county commissioners. So I, I'd be in full support of this if it was brought to council.
You know, by doing this, and supporting this. You know, by doing this and supporting this, you are supporting the citizens that live in Yelm because it's keeping the fire trucks, you know, paramedics here in Yelm. And we are gonna be writing a grant and I wanna put on that grant that I have the support of all the city council members and mayor. And write a resolution and add that to the grant. And we also have two different legislative districts involved in this. And they were very supportive last time around, so. Any other questions?
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
See information.
Thank you very much. And we are in the process of writing the grant right now.
All right, good. That takes us up to uh our council member initiatives. I don't have anything in particular to report on, although I'm gonna uh provide us with a little Yelm one-on-one at the end. Michael, did you have any uh?
Can you pull the blinds there? Can't see.
So let's start out with council member initiatives then, we'll go on over to Councilmember Curry. Moving right on down the line, we don't have our nameplates out, so I hope you all, I, I thought it was interesting that we all ended up in our same seats anyway.
Uh, amended budget for the, to reflect the skate park, not the skate park, splash park. Is that, when's that gonna come?
Everyone looks at someone else.
Not that hard, guys.
Well, it's gonna come as part of the, the budget amendment process. It's gonna come, everything comprehensively, it's not gonna come as that one specific thing. You're gonna look at it as a macro level of which that will be one thing. I was looking at him, making sure you guys didn't have any.
And when is that?
Side conversations. Uh, that's in the resolution that I drafted that I'll discuss for you that we bring back. But we're looking at uh mid, mid-October-ish.
Okay.
And there's gonna be, just on the topic, there's gonna be two things that you're gonna look at, council. And again, this is part of that larger, now that you're in a biennial phase, you know, essentially a calendar, so everything is predictable and on point. There's gonna be two things that you look at on an annual basis. One is adjusting the budget of what was predicted, projected, and what are the actuals. And then there's going to be an amendment process. So there's gonna be two separate processes that will be coming up. And, and I just wanna make sure we look at that because there will be opportunities. Once we essentially rebase the budget for this year, because you're on a biennial budget, looking at revenue, if things are higher or lower, you wanna make adjustments, then that would be the time once we rebase things.
Okay, and my only other thing for um initiatives is um, a couple of people have been talking on Facebook and there's significant interest in looking at, this is for Chad, for um getting rid of a lot of this stuff that we have to mow, as far as medians and bioswales and stuff. Just ripping those out and replacing them with wildflowers for, you know, bees and other pollinators. That way, it would save us on mowing costs. I know that one city did it and saved them twenty-five thousand dollars in mowing costs alone. And I know there's a significant amount of land that we, that we mow. And I thought this might be beneficial for a lot of people. Something that we could consider.
Are you, just a follow-up question, just what about parks? Is that also, you're hearing any in that discussion with trying to repurpose maybe some of the grass areas in parks?
I, we didn't cover that. People were talking more like medians and, you know, strips that aren't, aren't being used by anything. They're just blank ground, you know, but happen to have grass that we have to mow.
It, it, it certainly, we could consider it. The only caveat I have, would I would wanna make sure, like, if we are looking at storm grader swales, a lot of those do get a lot of sedimentation in because, especially ones with the notched curbs. You've probably seen those on some of our newer collector streets. Um, there's underdrain systems in there that have to be left available, which is usually why we ended with just grass and some street trees. Um, is so that we don't restrict the stormwater flow, but a lot of our stuff goes to ground pretty quickly. So that might just be more of a, kind of a research project to see which ones we could retain, which ones we could modify to get rid of some of that grass.
I know that on, um, I think it's NP Road, when you're walking down that railroad trail, you know, the trail, um, there's a huge strip that just gets mowed over and over and over. That could be full of wildflowers that you guys wouldn't have to mow, that'd be pretty cool.
That's a good suggestion. Why don't I, uh, well, I'll do this, I'll, I'll come back at, you know, a future study session and I could bring some maps and a few things and have some more statistics to show you why we actually do a lot of that.
And like cost, costing out, okay.
Certainly put some cost to it and so you, then we have some numbers to work with.
Sure.
You might wanna bring some photos from the roundabout coming into Yelm, 'cause I believe that's the, the approach they took there.
And also, people wanted to know who owns that strip next to Jack in the Box? The whole of Dandy Lions right now?
The Safeway Jack in the Box.
The Safeway Jack in the Box?
I mean, he looked, I don't think he's ever eaten a Jack in the Box in his life, so.
You don't know that?
I had to visualize from it, okay?
Yeah, somebody asked me, um, who owns that strip and, um, and, and like.
I'll just tell them, I do not know who maintains that. I know that we do maintain some of the area further west up Yelm Avenue, um, around some drainage areas, but that specifically, I, I don't know.
It is right away. It's, it's an interesting balance, we've looked at some of these things before. One Facebooker's uh wildflower is another's weed.
Yeah, exactly, and so that you'd have to, you'd have to really look. So that's what I was thinking, just start looking at the whole idea.
You're right, and a lot could be done to make that um non-vegetative. I think is probably the trick to go to, but only on where they're not uh swales, so.
I want that on a plaque. Next festival, Wildflower Festival.
Wildflower Festival, love it. Oh, here we go. All right, moving on.
That's it, I'm done, thanks.
Um, nothing big, just really quickly, just reminder to all the council, the approved form that we have for the government committee, so you can get us information, it comes to us, then we submit it to the committee it goes to. So we're getting some stuff that's coming from committees that we've never saw. We're like, what the heck is this? We never, we went to the wrong committee already. So just make sure that you, you know, the form we all approved, submit that to general government committee and then we'll send it to the committee it belongs, so we all have a track.
Email that to us again.
Yes, we can send it to the.
It's on the website, under council documents. I think we have three, we talked about this, I think there's three things coming at least.
That was the only big, and we'll talk, yeah, if we have other general government stuff, we'll talk about next time, though. That's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
I would like to, if we could get a really simple, simple, simple update on the uh, that six hundred and forty acres. I know it's really convoluted with a lot of information, but in the future, maybe next month's study session, we can talk about where we're at with that.
Absolutely.
I know there's just a huge num, lots of different issues with it, so maybe a quick brief.
Yeah, we can definitely give you a timeline on when the uh, that's gonna become part of the LID's properties again and what the next steps would be.
'Cause I was, yeah, just thinking about it today, I was like, oh, maybe we can get an update sometime fall. Thank you.
Is it the committee reporting recommendation?
Is that it?
Free form.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
Um, a couple of things, um, I was down in McKenna, um, in their, by their post office down there. And boy, I'll tell you what, if you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. It's, the maintenance is unbelievable, I mean, you drive up, it's a, it's, it's not scary.
Shorter lines too.
Shorter lines. Um, I noticed that our, our post office is not described that way. I'm wondering if there's, who it would, who would appropriately be responsible for.
The postmaster.
Postmaster general?
I'm hoping, I'm wondering if maybe we can reach out some, somehow and let them, you know.
So if you have a specific complaint about.
Compel them to uh.
No, if you have a specific complaint, like I have had on the road maintenance, for example, uh, you bring it to us specifically, we have our code enforcement people who can act on certain things and give encouraging letters on others. For example, when a certain business complex plaza in town, we were getting tons of, of complaints about potholes and bad markings, um, very, very close to where your business is. Uh, we have no authority, but our building official gave them a very strongly worded letter that encouraged them, along with all of the complaints they were getting from individuals that made those changes happen.
Understood.
So we can help in that regard. Turns out, sometimes the, uh, the road, for example, is not the post office, it's a private owner and uh.
Right, and I'm actually not referencing the road itself.
Building itself.
The landscaping or lack thereof.
Bring it, yeah, bring it in as a suggestion, we'll have Chris.
And as well, that building that you, that you previously mentioned. Um, I think that's, I think we really need to be aware of the, the potential of it dilapidating back to the point it was prior to uh the owners of the property going in and clearing it off.
Yeah.
That triangular piece behind the Sunbirds complex. Um, it's, it's starting to grow up again, it's a, if people find it a good place to drop off any, any trash they might have that they don't wanna, uh, you know, drop off in my dumpster or anywhere else.
What I've seen is it's ninety percent blackberry bramble, so no one's living there.
Well, I think if you take a walk out there, you'd find it different, it, it appears that way as you drive by.
For the rabbits.
There's a, it creates a pretty good cover for uh, for folks to.
Again, our, our building official can write letters and, and ask. If it becomes a health issue, a fire issue, Southeast Thurston has written letters as well and uh DNR will get involved sometimes to say, look, this is a risk to the community, please do something about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pinone?
Mayor, um, nothing much to report. We're making progress on um ordinances regarding, um, ordinances, but proposals to the general government committee regarding the fireworks, be no tax structure and secure mailboxes, making progress in all of them. And working with Michael to get them ready for the general committee, is that next week?
Uh, first of next month.
We just have it today. I apologize, that's why you probably hit me up on it. So I will have that ready for you before then, for sure, though. A lot of stuff to consider on these that I, I try, I wanna represent as many people and hopefully something that could get passed by the city council and not just throw it out there just for the heck of it, so. That's it.
Very good. Um, so two things, uh, one, I did um forget to remind you that there's two events coming up that the council might be interested as individuals. Uh, one is tomorrow night at five-thirty, the Nisqually River Council is awarding Jim Woolcoggs with the Nisqually Stewardship Award, it's given out once every five years, it's a pretty big deal. It's held out at the farm, uh, they want a hundred bucks a head to attend, uh, but that's what that is. And uh, certainly gonna be a lot of representation, there are expected about two hundred people to come out and applaud his efforts over the last thirty years of his activism for the Nisqually River. Pretty cool. And then this Friday is the au, the inaugural game on our new turf at Yelm Community Schools High School. This was in part funded by a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the Seahawks and NFL, and they will be sending representatives, there'll be polloting out there, there's gonna be opening remarks and ceremony. And then, of course, the game, that starts at five-ish and then the game kickoff is at seven. That'll be kind of historic to see the first game played on. It's not just the turf, they did everything, the scoreboards, the track, the, I mean, the lighting. In fact, Grant made a, an interesting, uh, comment today in our management team meeting that JBLM and Southside Military Communities partnerships are very happy with the design because in the new LED lighting for the stadium, it cut down on, dramatically on the light pollution that causes difficulties for our night flyers, uh, when they're doing training missions, so they are appreciative of that as well. So, um, and then, as promised, I, uh, we're, we're gonna play around with the concept of a Yelm one-on-one. And uh, and folks, this is as much uh for our benefit as it is for the uh, or maybe the other way around, for people who are viewing these tapes or, uh, you know, watching this, to see some of the things that we should know as a council, as a city government. So some of these will be repetitive, um, and maybe not interesting. And hopefully, though, you'll find something interesting out of each one. They're all gonna be designed to be about maybe ten minutes unless they, you know, get some discussion going amongst the council and it's just for edification. And since this was timely, uh, we just had a really, really good class brought on by the AWC on public records uh, that was hosted by the city here. And we had about twenty-five people show up from around the region, uh, took advantage of this training. And as you all know, as elected officials, a few years ago, the state legislature passed a law that said elected officials will receive training in public records, uh, the Open Public Meetings Act and public records retention. And this was all part of that. The, um, I had to do a little digging, it's funny, it says thou shalt have all of these trainings, but it doesn't say how we will document them or who you report them to. But uh, be known that the bottom line is if a court is looking at how the city prepared to respond to a public records request, the uh, the court will look favorably upon a council that has had their training and can document such, and may not look as favorably in terms of providing awards. So if mistakes were made because of lack of training, you're probably gonna, this, as a city, get hammered more by the courts uh, in findings for the plaintiffs on these, so. Uh, important and very quick, AWC, MRSC, uh, and others, the State Attorney General's Office, they all provide opportunities for relatively short and informa, informative classes on this. So, and just as a refresher from our class the other day, a public record is anything in writing, quotes up in the air here, uh, that is anything to do with the running of the government, that the government owns. And so a lot of the question has come back, well, what do you mean by what the government owns? Well, certainly any document, any email that we're doing through the course of our business and, and city council members as well as staff. But they've also expanded it to personally owned, uh, things like cell phones. If the records request demonstrates that there is a message that should be on that phone, um, the owner of the phone is responsible for looking for and producing that record. And the courts would find it incumbent upon the owner of that phone to do that search. And if unable to provide that, uh, there could be findings against that individual for not being able to provide that. And it's still kinda murky, but there've been, he represented a bunch of case law that demonstrated just that. So, um, making sure that if you have city business that you wanna do, um, use, either use a city phone or, um, you know, text and delete is one coping strategy that they came up with.
That was gonna be my question, well, what happens if someone just said they deleted that?
Yeah, so remember that whatever you delete may also be, um, somebody else may have it. Then they can demonstrate that it existed and you're saying that it doesn't, then you're at fault.
Well, you could say perhaps that it did exist, but you deleted it.
And they would say that you had no right to delete that, that it was a government property at that point and should have been held in a, um, and find a way. So for example, some people will send their text message to their email and then it becomes an email record as well. But that's what they're asking people to do, if it's got anything to do with the run-in of the government, they want you to keep that record in written form or a recorded form. All of our videos and so forth, of course, are part of that. But it's come down to that, where even text messages on what you think is a private phone can be considered public record.
And, and just so you know, this is one of those conversations that we'll have with, you know, the conversation we talked about with the budget bit. Because of this information, I mean, to, to protect council and help you separate your private life from your public life, um, you know, we think it's important to revisit that conversation of getting you all city cell phones. I mean, we have office space available that you can utilize, but just to help you separate that and, and make those phones available. We've started to work up some numbers and so that's something to do.
You're gonna have to get a new phone. If someone texts me and says, hey Joe, do you know about this, uh, water rate increase? I would say, no, I don't know about that. Is that a public, can someone do a public records request on that?
There's, what I would hate to do is give you an example of one thing and have you kinda take it as gospel. I mean, the, my best advice would be there's, there's resources that you all, you know, could, should take on this stuff, um.
If we're making a priority here for the city, we should get like a full, like an attorney come out here and say, this is exactly what you can't, you can't be doing, rather than just a one-on-one Yelm.
So that's why we provided the class that you could have attended and gotten a lot of those questions from an expert.
And I've attended these, open, the public records.
These are, these are the experts that we're relying on to give us this information. And my one-on-one today is to bring this to your attention and obviously this has sparked some interest. So, uh, we can provide that, but I'll tell you what the lawyer said at the class the other day when he was teaching it, uh, is that you, you can just play the game of examples all day long. And he boiled it down to, if you in any way think that what you're doing on your texting or your emailing has anything to do with government work, you should find a way to document that. Because the person who comes in with a public records request has the right to request that record. It then falls upon the city government to provide them with that record. And you'll even get, um, dinged with not researching it thoroughly if they can demonstrate that this record's supposed to exist and it doesn't exist. We can't, we can't provide it when we should be able to provide it. That's all we're saying. It's up to the individual to decide on how strict they wanna do that. I mean, honestly, with Mr. Flippy here, uh, if there's, if I found myself engaged in a text conversation that had something to do with city business, which I don't, 'cause I use a phone and I talk and so far they're not making us record these conversations, right? Uh, but if I were to do so, I would immediately. Uh, but if I were to do so, I would immediately and have done so, actually texted the, or forward the text to my email and that would save permanent record within my email, which never goes away.
Do you do that?
I have done that.
But not for all your texts?
Oh, no, absolutely not. I, I have an, I have a filter that I understand personally. The, the, I've, I've crossed the line. I'm not having a casual conversation. I'm talking about city business with somebody that had, that I, that I could just feel. Somebody says, hey, we know you were having a conversation with so-and-so because they provided it's what their half of the text. I'm like, if that man having that kinda conversation, I forward the text to my email and there it lives forever. Now, the hard part would be, yeah, it does that.
Like an email thing?
So, um, this, and again, this is to bring up this exact kind of discussion, so I appreciate you asking the questions. I'm not gonna have the answers, um, uh, for all of these things, but, uh, there are things that I wanted to tell you about. Uh, our city clerk was also in the class and some of the things that I had to ask her afterwards came out of this presentation from examples of how cities have been hammered with these public records requests. And I'm pleased to say that our city clerk has developed policies and procedures on how to respond appropriately to these public records requests. We have five days by law to respond to the requister. Now, that doesn't mean have to give them all they're looking for. But we have to be able to respond to them within five days. It says, uh, this is what we're going to do to try to accommodate your request. That's easy if you get the 29 requests for public records that we had in 2018. But some people are out there learn, they've learned that they can make money doing this.
Sure.
Um, they hammer a city our size with multiple, multiple requests. They're very complicated and, uh, to the point where you might even have to hire somebody to come in and help you process these requests. The courts are now finding ways to look favorably upon a city that at least demonstrates the ability to log these and put them in an order of, uh, of importance, if some of them are more timely than others. Uh, and as long as that the city is demonstrating that we're doing that and we can document and record, uh, then the, the courts are looking favorably on us. There were some examples of cities who weren't able to do that and they were hit with very large monetary fines by the court system. And again, I'm pleased to say that, uh, that we're doing better. What was the example that I wanted you to bring up today? Of, um, I don't, but I'll think of it in just a second.
What we had this year?
This year so far, we've had 11.
11.
Yeah.
29 last year, right?
Take a long, um, city employee time then?
Well, it depends on what's requested. Yeah, it can.
And who does it? Is it you that?
Yeah, they come to me and then if I can answer it, I do, um, but if, if I don't have the records, then I have to, you know, send it off to the staff that does. Oh, I know which, the one you were talking about, the one from Smart Source. Smart Source.
Oh, the vendors.
The vendors.
Yeah, this was an interesting public records request.
Yeah.
That I didn't expect.
And actually we've gotten this one like three times, I think, this year, um, requesting different timeframes. They wanted to know all the vendors that we paid from this, you know, date to this date, their address, their contact information, what it was we purchased, how much, you know, and that's, it can be time consuming.
And they're doing that just for the purpose of focusing their advertising to us to try to sell us a product. And they make us do their, their research for them on what it is that we'd likely be buying. All legal, allowing them to do that. But each request that comes in has to be analyzed by the public records person, so. Has to look at, is this a real public records request? Engage the person to try to define it because some people will come in and say, I want every email that was sent this year by the, by the city council. You know how long that would take? Because then she has to go in and redact anything that has personal information, financial information, law enforcement information, and that can take an extraordinary amount of time. Again, the court is acceptable of that a long time, as long as we can demonstrate a process of going through it. Specifically says that, you know, we're not going to, they're not gonna allow us to be, to hinder our regular operations so long as we're making an effort towards that goal.
So what do you say? Do you, you're working on like 10, 20 or 30 emails a day that you redact and all that stuff? 'Cause you can't spend a whole day.
Well, that would be up to how Lori would have to process it. Fortunately, we have not had that one. But other cities have and, and one city in, in Eastern Washington actually shut down. They disfranchised, whatever you call that one. They're no longer a city 'cause they couldn't afford the public records request.
Yeah, because it can be penalties per day.
And, and I'll give you an example. I was gonna leave this, well, here it is. I'm almost at the end anyway. The Liquor Control Board, state of Washington.
Liquor Cannabis Boards.
Excuse me, Liquor Cannabis Control Board. Prior to them being the liquor and cannabis, they were just liquor victims. But, um, they were being hammered by this one individual over and over and over, spending so much time on it that they finally, um, struck a deal with them. And they paid him $192,000 to agree to pull all of his pu, public records requests and not make another one for seven years.
Wow.
Same guy went and did the same thing to the lottery. Made another $135,000.
Wow.
Yeah, so there's people who are finding ways to make money and we're putting up some good defenses.
That is ridiculous. Tax payers expense.
Uh, yeah.
You might think.
And so that was, um, ex, all I wanted to do today was to give you an example of what the Public Records, uh, Act has, uh, done to add another layer of complexity to what we do as a city. Uh, this wasn't the way it was 20 years ago, uh, but it is definitely our reality right now. And Lori, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it.
Any questions or we had a pretty good discussion on it? Okay. Then there we go. All I got.
Study session. Just leave.
We don't move during, Cody, you just leave.
They're looking at me like, I don't make a motion.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming out, Southeast Thurston Fire Authority.
Thank you for having me.
Do you guys anticipate the, uh, grant for the building?